Good evening, welcome to the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 6, 2007. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Girl Scout Troop 234, who will present the colors and lead us in our flag salute. Girls?
Fans, please rise. Color Guard Attention. All those in uniforms, salute your colors. All others, put your hand over your heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro. Color Guard, post the colors. Color Guard Salute. You may be seated.
Thank you, that was Girl Scout Troop 234. Nice job, girls. We'll move to our roll call. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Gillette.
Here.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Glancy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Irwin.
Present.
Mayor Fox.
Here. Item number four is Special Announcements and Requests for Continuance Items. We have one item, Item 9B, I just want to call to the council's attention, there's been an addendum that's been included in the green packet, and so when it comes time to deal with Item 9B, I would draw council's attention to the green packet. Any other announcements or requests for continuance regarding tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to Item 5, that's all, Special Presentations, and I'll move down to the podium. This evening, we are honoring through this week, March 11th through 17th, Girl Scouts Make the World a Better Place, and so if the ladies will join me at the podium, I'll As I mentioned earlier, tonight's flag salute was provided by Troop 234. With me, we have Michelle Adler and the girls from Troop 234. As we mentioned, this week is Girl Scouts Make the World a Better Place, and with the events that we've had over the last couple of weeks, particularly with the loss of Corporal Anthony Malia, I think it's important for us to focus on what's good about this world. And certainly, the Girl Scouts are a big part of that, not just for their cookies, either. They do a great job in a lot of areas, so with that, I want to turn it over to Michelle to tell us a little bit about what's going on this week, and then I have a proclamation that I want to present to them. Michelle?
First of all, thank you for having us here tonight. We're getting ready as Girl Scouts to celebrate our 95th birthday on March 12th, so that's why we call this Girl Scout Week. We are in the middle of our spring cookie sale, so you'll see Girl Scouts all over town, and we appreciate your support. Also, we'd just really like to thank the City of Thousand Oaks for your support of Girl Scouts, especially the Girl Scouts involved in the Serenity Under the Oaks Service Unit and the Los Padres Service Unit, and we really appreciate it.
Let me just read a few things from the proclamation. Certainly, as we all know, Girl Scouts is a part of our American fabric, but you may be interested to know that there are more than 3.7 million Girl Scout members nationwide, with nearly 50 million women who grew up participating in Girl Scouts, and they exemplify leadership, character, integrity, all the things that we want young women to grow into as they become leaders and people that actively participate in our community. So on that note, it's my honor and pleasure, Michelle, on behalf of the City Council, to present this proclamation to you for Girl Scout Week, Scouts Make the World a Better Place. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Hold it up. Nice job, guys. That brings us to Item 6, which is our public comment time. Madam Clerk, could you call public comment, please?
This is the time and place for public comments. The speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to Council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for the City Council on the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. We have one person who has presented a card and pursuant to Council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
All right, Mr. Nick Kidway, and we actually have two cards, I believe. Followed that by Suzanne Duckett. Mr. Kidway, good evening.
Good evening. I begin in the name of the Lord, who is the most beneficial, most merciful. My name is indeed Nick Kidway. And Dr. Glancy, last time I checked, still Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Seems like a lot of people in the city are, I guess, very happy with the city, that's why the citizens' groups are just falling apart, that according to staff, but we still find things of concern. It's like starting the meeting that the mayor will help citizens from straying from the subject. I mean, you should just look at, hear the Board of Supervisors hearings on the internet, and just go to the public comments and look at Carol Dean Williams, and make a fool of himself over the years, but that's what this wonderful country allows us. I mean, people, it's for the people to differentiate whether there really is a smoking gun, whether there is hanky panky going on in the city, or if it's all fluff. In fact, you folks gave away thousands of dollars and chose a Long Beach vendor over a Newberry Park vendor, and I've talked to him, and that's what he said, and it was very sad, it was 5-0 vote, even though he had a conversation with a council member and fell in love with a council member, saying that, well, she's wonderful and all that, but I said, she voted, it's a 5-0 vote. I mean, the vote is what really matters. I mean, why can't people, I mean, that's what is so disappointing about this council is that there really is no minority voice, and there really is no one looking out for the taxpayer interest. I know Mr. Glancy talked about looking out for the taxpayer interest, but it's just depressing, and that's what the gentleman was saying, the business owner said, well, citizens should really not be talking about things that they don't really know about, in reference to myself speaking about it, and then he changed his tune when he realized that I was speaking in supporting of his, support of his position, but I tried to explain to him, and he's an immigrant just like I am, and that's why he feels strongly about, about there not being corruption in the government, and that's what is really at the heart of, and the meat of the matter, is that there is corruption in this government, and there's two ways of corruption. One is, you know, bribery and outright thievery, and the other is just wasting taxpayer funds. It's just as bad, if not worse, to waste taxpayer funds, and if you read the agenda packets, I mean, last week, I asked, and the city manager turned it around, and no one on the council challenged, that give a report on the Caruso Project. I don't want to see it myself, I don't need to call the city finance director, you need, I mean, you spent millions of dollars, and there was no fixed amount. How much money was spent on, for this developer? How much is going to be spent in the future? We need a report, and we need a report as soon as possible. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Our last speaker, Suzanne Duckett. Good evening, Ms. Duckett.
Good evening, Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. I've been waiting 10 to 13 years to finally see the hounds get that fox. Yes. I'm just sorry that it was at James Smith's behalf. A lot of us know the Smith family, they've been involved in sports for many years. This is all about moral and ethical character, and it needs to be pursued. Thank you.
Same, Ms. Duckett. We'll move to Item 7, that's our City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Any items the council would like pulled on this? Mr. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you. Item 7H, which deals with the Ranch Potrero.
Okay, 7H, any other requests? All right, hearing none. Dr. Glancy, you want to move the balance of the calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do move approval of consent calendar, barring 7H.
All right. Motions to approve the consent calendar withholding 7H. Any discussion on that? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Move to Item 7H. Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you. I, first of all, would like to correct something in the staff report that really didn't come to my attention until this afternoon. The council vote on the motion was 3-0, with Councilmember Mazri absent, and I abstained. That involved the conceptual plan, Items 1 through 5, and the reason I abstained is, as a member of the Ad Hoc Committee, I did not sign on an agreement that we would extend utilities all the way to Olympia Farms. When it was presented on September 27, 2005, by the Park District, that all of a sudden utilities would be extended, that was not something that had been, that had been discussed and approved by the Ad Hoc Committee, so as a result, I did not approve that, and I abstained, and the other issue was the picnic table that would accommodate approximately 200 people. And other than that, correction, I, we'll go ahead and move to approve Item 7H.
All right, Ms. Bill de la Peña moves for approval of 7H. Discussion?
As maker of the motion, I forgot to mention one thing. When we, when it comes time to establish focus groups, could we make sure, could we be presented with the guidelines as to how the members of the focus groups would be chosen, and also to make sure that everybody in the immediate vicinity of Ranch Potrero is notified by mail? That would be part of my motion.
We will advise the council as that focus group is assembled, and just for the council's background, the general composition of it was defined by the COSCA Board of Directors in late November, and that would include key stakeholders in the immediate area principally, as well as general community representatives.
Ms. Albona?
I just want to, I just want to echo with Mr. Towne, just told council, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, and members of the public, is that the, the COSCA, there is a supplemental in your packet on this issue, that COSCA is the, what we'll call, quote unquote, lead agency for actually doing the specific plan, the how that was going to proceed was brought back in, I believe you said, November, Mr. Towne, to the COSCA Board. The COSCA Board blessed what was included in that, and that's really how we're moving forward, so I'm just concerned about the council adding one, something new that wasn't part of it, and this agenda item is for initiation-specific plan. I guess I have a concern about council adding something new to something that COSCA is really overseeing and has already given its blessing to. And Mr. Towne did accurately state what was the committee, how that, those groups were going to be made up, and it's really being staff-driven at an administrative level.
So this is something, then, that should be addressed by COSCA, not by the city?
Correct, and COSCA actually already addressed it.
Okay, then, I will, at the next meeting, next week, I will seek clarification. With that, I will withdraw the portion that the city be informed about the focus groups meetings or the process of the selection, but I would still like to include that the immediate neighbors be notified. Thank you.
Okay, what we need to vote on tonight is what's on the agenda. I think staff has identified that this is out of the purview of the council. You point out, Ms. Bill de la Peña, you're on COSCA, so you could probably address this in the next COSCA meeting, but for tonight's purposes, I also point out to the council, it's a consent item, so we need to have limited discussion on this. So just to, so we're clear, the motion for tonight, based on what staff's telling me, we can't really add to that. If the proper forum for that would be COSCA.
That's fine. I do have a question for the city manager, then, perhaps the city attorney. Is something as this initiating a general plan amendment, should that be on consent calendar, or should that actually have been pulled out as a separate item?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we did talk about that at the staff level, and since it is more of a procedural implementation step to a previous direction, as mentioned by the COSCA Board, as well as by council, we chose to do it this way.
There's nothing legally, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, council members, there's nothing legally that requires it, and exactly for the reason that Mr. Mittenix just stated is why it was done this way, because we very recently reported to council that these were the next steps, which is why we put it on the consent calendar in terms of what we're doing.
Okay, that's, it's fine, just for reasons of transparency, perhaps, it would have been better to extract that, but as long as we're allowed to still speak about it, that's okay, then I will go ahead and move.
You know what, let me, I have a speaker card on us, so you pass it, Mr. Kidway? Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I misread that. Go ahead, you can make your comments.
I represent Newberry Park. Unfortunately, speaking on the consent calendar again, and I wish I could just say it was hanky panky, but it seems to be worse than that, even though this calendar tonight is not as bad. I want to add G, if you don't mind. A is the minutes, and the mayor was kind enough to say that the consent calendar is the city council and redevelopment agency, and I know you slashed the residents' roundtable to save costs, and you use the budget task force as an example, but out of the 89 or 83 recommendations that we made, one of them was, and the council was going to bring it so that you can separate the consent, the redevelopment calendar from the city calendar, which any good agency does, I mean, around the whole state, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't know what's taking so long. The second thing is, you still don't provide minutes. You have them on a binder, but all the good bodies in this agency, and that's the difference between, I mean, you work in LA County, and that's the difference between LA County and Ventura County, if you, with all due respect, I mean, Burbank and all that, they have their meetings at 4:00 in the afternoon or 11:00 in the morning, and there's no minutes or anything provided, but here, you go to the Park District, Mr. Gillette is a good example, you go to the planning commission meeting even, and they have the minutes before they have been signed up. I know there was a redhead that caused problems, but those days are gone, so, I mean, why don't you be like, I mean, I can consider this civilized, other, because this is what civilizes us, is provide the minutes. I was in the residents' roundtable last night, and we were discussing the motion that was made to eliminate us, and the minutes are in your packet, but it's not available to me. I thought I'd call a council member, but I didn't really have time, because I think they are the ones that are to be approved tonight. Number D, hazardous waste approval, which is a $20,000 agreement with, for citizens to go in Camarillo for household waste. I mean, this is like free money, that's why nobody discusses it. I'll be generous and say 200 residents of the city will take advantage of it. Divide that by 20,000, that's $100 per resident subsidy. I would say it would be less than 100. So you're going to spend $200, have them drive all the way to Camarillo for the hazardous waste. I mean, doesn't make any sense, except it's free money, so why don't you do it? Number G, the boiler room, I would like to present again, that in the consent calendar it was before, that the city violated the EPA rules for this boiler. I just want to put it on the record. And Mr. Fox, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kidway. All right, Ms. Bill de la Peña, you want to reintroduce 7H? We didn't vote yet.
No, but the motion still stands to approve 7H.
Okay. Discussion? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5 for 0.
Okay, that is approved. We'll move to Item number 8, that's our public hearings, we have none. Item 9 is our departmental reports, and 9A will be handled by Captain Pentus.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The Police Department supports this ordinance for a couple of different reasons. We look at what other communities are doing in surrounding areas, specifically Los Angeles, because we do have a number of criminals who come into our city and commit crimes, various crimes, so part of this ordinance, the first part of it, which requires the reporting of a lost or stolen firearm, helps investigators, when they're investigating a crime, when a gun is found, a weapon is found, to trace it back to the owner, and with this ordinance that could assist in that. The second portion of it, there are many people who are forbidden to own a firearm, convicted felon, someone convicted of domestic violence, and it's a deterrent to own that firearm. So overall, we see this as a deterrent and as an investigative tool.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Captain Pentus on this item? Mr. Gillette? Yeah, we have three cards.
I'll wait, I'll wait to comment until after the card, after the speakers.
Okay, we have three public comment cards. We'll start with Richard Minich, looks like, sorry if I can't pronounce that, Joe Griford, and Tim Haney.
Thank you, sir. It's Minick.
Minick, okay.
My name is Richard Minick, and I live on Lone Oak Drive here in Thousand Oaks. Indeed, I have had the great privilege of living in Thousand Oaks since the late 1950s, I suspect probably longer than virtually anyone, with maybe the exception of Mr. Gillette at the end, who may have, and I'm a longtime resident, went to CLU, but I'm also a member of the Firearms Freedom Council of Ventura County, I'm the president, and we are an NRA affiliate club, although, let me be clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of the NRA. Regarding this law, we are actually opposed to this law, or to this, excuse me, regulation, and I would like to point out that the California Rifle and Pistol Association has taken a position against this ordinance. It seems to me to be one of those well-intentioned but misguided policies that in fact will not have the intended but a number of unintended results. Of course, anyone who is a law-abiding firearm owner in California is aware that over the years, many, many laws have been passed. We're one of the most legally restrictive law states in the country already, in which the expenses, the inconvenience, the lack of areas to be able to shoot, they can be closed very easily, and it's very difficult to get another one open, and now it's the notion of that we're going to add various kinds of potential criminal prosecutions for people who are law-abiding firearms owners. I mean, it recalls to mind the time when, when the laws were such that women who'd been raped found themselves not only the victim of the crime, but then victimized by the process that was subsequent. In this case, it's making a victim of the victim again. As the vast majority of occasions when a firearm is stolen, certainly people, as soon as they become aware of it, report it to the police, but under this ordinance, say that you're on vacation for a couple of weeks, you come back, you discover that there's been a burglary in your house, you've lost, potentially, in this ordinance, you could be prosecuted for not having reported it within 72 hours. I'm especially sensitive to this, because I had a business in Florida, it was a grove business, and given the nature back there, we had, I had some firearms on the grove, they were in a locked office in a locked container, and there was a certain employee, we believe, who was engaged in some larceny, and sometime in the month and a half to two months that I was out here in California between visits, they went in and helped themselves to a couple of my firearms. Under this ordinance, when I got back and discovered what had occurred, and called the police, and actually, in my case, I called the BATF as well to report it, excuse me, my three minutes are already up.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joe Griford, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. My comments will be very brief. However, I, like many, any other people in Thousand Oaks, I think, take a lot of pride, not only in the feeling of being safe, but being able to tell the world that we live in one of the safest communities in the United States this size. I would like to see that continued. In order to do that, I think that it's incumbent upon us to give law enforcement every opportunity they have to see to it that they can follow up, and they can trace, and they can go back to what the cause of the incident may be. I think that this proposal in front of you today does that. I would like to see it continue, I would like to see it continue for many reasons, and more than anything, I think that it would be very helpful in eventually restricting the amount of movement of illegal arms in this area. I would like to see it approved, and I heartily endorse it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griford. Tim Haney, is our last speaker on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Haney. Good evening, Council, I'm Tim Haney, I'm a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks. Last month, a 14-year-old boy confronts another teenager in a boys' San Bernardino home. He pulls out a handgun, shoots the other teenager to death. Again last month, a gunman enters a Salt Lake City mall, opens fire with a shotgun, takes the lives of four innocent people. Yesterday in Signal Hill, a man walks into a printing business, pulls out a semi-automatic handgun, shoots three people before taking his own life. And for those out there who don't think it can still happen here in Thousand Oaks, Memorial Day 2005, a killer walks into a Thousand Oaks driveway, pulls out a 9-millimeter semi-automatic Ruger handgun, and takes the life of my best friend Steve Mason and my beautiful wife of 27 years, Jan, shoots me three times, and leaves me for dead in the driveway of that home. These horrific scenes of senseless gun violence are played over and These horrific scenes of senseless gun violence are played over and over and over and over and over every day, day in and day out in our state. And what they do is they escalate an epidemic of death and bloodshed throughout. You ask yourself, where'd the gun come from? Trafficking of illegal guns have reached nightmarish proportions in this state, and derailing that flow of guns has become a priority of law enforcement and public officials across the state. Plain and simple, it's got to stop. Lost and stolen ordinance that you consider tonight would unite us with Los Angeles, San Francisco, West Hollywood, and other California cities that have recently passed similar ordinances, which will give law enforcement an effective tool in locating the source of potentially thousands of legal gun transfers in this state, and shutting those traffickers down. In particular, law enforcement will be able to use lost and stolen to undercover straw purchasers. Those are purchasers who buy guns in this state legally, then they turn them over to people who aren't qualified, and they become an illegal gun into our crime system. Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department conducted a study leading to Los Angeles passing their recent lost and stolen ordinance, and they discovered that an alarming number of guns were knowingly and willingly sold by, through straw purchases. The proximity of Thousand Oaks to Los Angeles mandates that we be realistic and visionary as to the reality that those guns are coming into and leaving Ventura County. Opponents to this law like to claim that it will prosecute an innocent gun owner who unknowingly had lost their gun, or had it stolen, didn't know it was gone. Please. To begin with, this ordinance doesn't punish anyone any more than existing state laws that require persons who have been involved in automobile accidents to report them to the Department of Motor Vehicles. Furthermore, law enforcement has a discretion as to who they prosecute and how, and they're not interested. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for saying. Alma Babcock.
Actually, I'm representing my husband, Charles T. Babcock. I live at 1807 Hendrix Avenue, Thousand Oaks. Our Charles could not be here tonight, because he's ill, I'm going to read his statement. I fully support, fully support reporting the theft or loss of firearms owned by an individual. However, I do have some concerns. Number one, how would the legal ownership be established? For the proposed ordinance to be effective, a database similar to the one established for color ownership would have to be established. Presently, registered farms establish their location and the legal owner. However, is there legislation to cover guns in possession by a person not legally entitled to possess a gun? How would the honest, law-abiding person be protected against any dangerous misuse of the database information? Number two, a 72-hour reporting time after the legal owner discovers that the firearm has been stolen is probably reasonable for most cases. However, the owner may not discover that the gun has been stolen until some time has elapsed. This could lead to unfair judgment of the gun owner. The person who's stealing the weapon has used it in a crime before the owner discovers that it's missing. History events leading up to World War II clearly shows how gun registration and subsequent confiscation was accomplished. This is an important point to keep in mind. I urge the City Council to carefully consider all aspects of the proposed ordinance before passing it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. All right, that concludes our public comment cards. Go back to council now, questions for staff. Ms. Irwin.
Yeah, Captain Pentis, I was wondering if you could answer the last speaker's questions about, first of all, how do you establish legal ownership, and how do you protect the database? And I think we had concern from a few speakers about the 72 hours, but I, in the ordinance here, it says after discovery or knowledge, and then I assume that there's also some discretion on the part of the Police Department.
As one of the speakers mentioned, there is discretion, and if someone returned from vacation, and upon discovery of it, the 72 hours had elapsed, of course, when we're doing enforcement of law, we look at mitigating circumstances, we look at the intent, and if it was past the 72 hours, we may or may not do the enforcement. We look at, it's a case-by-case issue. And we're not locked into 72 hours. 72 hours seems like a reasonable amount of time, but that's, that's up to interpretation, and of course, you could change that. The other part of it is, when someone legally buys a gun, there is a 15-day waiting period, all your information is placed in the Department of Justice database, alcohol, tobacco, and firearms have a database, and then after that 15-day waiting period, you purchase the gun. So if the gun is lost or stolen, and there's not been a change, it goes back to that original gun owner matching the serial number to the purchase, and the address and the name of the person. So this would just, you do the legal transfer of a gun, it shows who owned the gun most recently, and that's what we want to know. It may be an unreported burglary, maybe something else that we're not aware of. A lot of guns from this area are stolen in Los Angeles, are stolen in Northern California, guns, they cross state lines all the time. It gives us another tool, and that's what we're looking at. We're not looking at necessarily the prosecution of the ordinance, we're looking at it as a tool for us to use in an investigation, and to remind the public that you have a responsibility, you have a serious responsibility as a gun owner to follow the law, if you sell the gun, do so legally.
Who has access to the database?
Only sworn personnel, only sworn law enforcement personnel.
Okay, and what is the Thousand Oaks Police Department's plan for publicity of this ordinance?
When we do an ordinance, a new ordinance, we want the public to be educated, just as if we put a new stop sign in an area, we put red flags up, we try to advertise it so people are aware of it. With something like this, we immediately do a press release, and we also look at putting it on websites as well, the sheriff's website, the city's website, but a press release and an interview of the intent of the law, because a lot of people, just like that last speaker whose husband had those questions, they're going to have those same types of questions. So we want to answer them through the press, through a press release.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Billie Lopina.
The question I have may be answered either by you, Captain Pentis, or the city attorney. What is the penalty, since it is, would be a misdemeanor if you did not report your stolen gun within 72 hours after discovery? What is the penalty for that?
If the, if the city were to prosecute a case, if they did, if they failed to follow the ordinance, it would be like any other, and it's a misdemeanor, and I believe, I can't quote the fine, I think it's either, it's maybe up to $500, there's so much jail time or both, it's one of those things that's just typical for, it's the same standard as any of our city ordinance, as if there's a violation. But I can double-check the, that section of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing done, what's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to the last speaker's comments, this issue has been, been before various members of the council and city staff members for months. It has been discussed, re-discussed, it was brought home very graphically, as Mr. Haney said, in 2005. When he was wounded, his wife was murdered, and his best friend was murdered, a deputy sheriff in Santa Rosa Valley was also attacked by that man, a woman was beaten, and he eventually went into the Walmart store in Simi Valley and committed suicide. So considering this, and understanding the issues related to it, from my perspective as one council member, I have what I consider to be a fairly thorough knowledge of firearms, their ownership, possession, responsibility of a firearms owner. Being a former U.S. Marine, 25 years in police service, I have a thorough understanding of weapons. I also am a former member of the National Rifle Association on a couple of occasions, and I had to re-up so I could go dove hunting up in the Cajon Pass. But the point here is, this is not, in my opinion, another level of gun control. This is a tool that our police are asking for, and spurred on by a very real firsthand incident that occurred in our city. And with, with other people that I've talked to, especially from some of the larger cities who met and discussed this item in detail with the National League of Cities Public Safety both Policy and Steering Committees, this is a tool that our Police Department wants, and I personally think that there are, the advantages to this far outweigh the potential for disadvantages. And so with that thought in mind, and without going on any further, I'll move the staff recommendation, that the ordinance be read in title only, further reading to be waived, and if no objection, introduced.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do you want to read that? End of the record.
An ordinance adding section 5-11.03 to chapter 11, Title V, requiring mandatory reporting of lost or stolen firearms.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All right, vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, that is approved. Move to item 9B, that's a review and amendment of the city's non-smoking policy for publicly-assisted rental residential projects. And to provide the staff report would be Russ Watson, our Housing and Redevelopment Manager. Mr. Watson, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight's presentation is to review an amendment of city's non-smoking policy for public assisted rental residential projects. Way of background, brief background, September 2004, the council adopted resolution 04-136. This resolution enacted a policy that required one-third, 33% of the units to be designated as non-smoking. It applied to publicly assisted rental, rental projects, and to date, there are four projects that contain the rental restriction, which total about 74 non-smoking units. These projects include, excuse me, Richmond Terrace, Casa de Feliz, Bella Vista, and Shadow Hills Apartments. All of these are properties owned by Mini Mansions. The resolution also directed staff and the stakeholder group to review the policy effectiveness and report back to City Council. Stakeholder Group was established in 2003 by council action, it met to, in fact, recommend the original resolution, and has met periodically since the adoption of that, most recently to review the status of the current policy. Stakeholders determined that a survey would be an effective tool to gauge the program Survey was conducted during this last year under the auspices of County Public Health Tobacco and Education Program, with direction from Cal Lutheran, as well as research pathologists from County Public Health. The survey, which is attached to your staff report, consisted of 22 questions that were developed in conjunction with the stakeholders. Stakeholders are listed in your staff report as to the representation that was in place over the last year to consider this issue. Survey targeted only Mini Mansions projects, which total 397 units within the city of Thousand Oaks. These were to be conducted by telephone, and individuals on Mini Mansions waitlist, of which at that time, there were 650, and this was to be a written survey, mail response. Of the 970, excuse me, 397 existing units, a number of the units, 160 had unavailable phone numbers, 10 had disconnected numbers, 17 were vacant, nine were declined to participate. Everyone had the option to decline if they wished to, and 201 were available to actually participate in the survey. This represented about 51% of Mini Mansions units. Of the 201 units, 156 were actually contacted and responded to the phone survey. Of the waitlist, there were 1650 were mailed out, 119 were returned, which represented about an 18% written return. Should also note that the surveys were conducted in both English and Spanish. Key survey results are summarized in the staff report and presented here. 95% of both groups, this would be a combined summary, believe that smoking is harmful. 87 of the residents do not allow smoking within their homes. Living in a smoke-free facility was favored by the majority of the respondents, 71 of the current residents, 65 on the waitlist. 48 of the current residents said they have breathed secondhand smoke while on Mini Mansions properties, and maybe just caught a whiff of it, the survey basically just said, have you smelled it? 86 of the residents respondents said that they had not smoked 100 cigarettes or more. The use of 100 was determined to be sort of designation, are you a smoker, or have you been a smoker before in your life? And 82 of the respondents said that they have no smokers in their homes. As a follow-up, the stakeholder group met a number of times to work through a recommendation, consider an increase to non-smoking units, and discuss the potential of grouping non-smoking units. The consensus of the stakeholder group is to recommend a modification, bringing two-thirds of the units to non-smoking, with the exception for those units where special needs funding and residence occur, wherein the percentage would be 50% of the units. Units can be dispersed throughout the project, i.e. not grouped, and that the review of a policy implementation would begin in a number, in a couple of years. I believe you have received a supplemental agenda packet that basically restructures staff's recommendation. It includes the adoption of a resolution to implement the 66% and 50% special needs, and it gives staff direction, authorization to develop the non-smoking policy guidelines, which would include a consideration of a non-smoking buffer around the common areas in residential units, specify that balconies are to be considered part of the residential units, and allow an opportunity for non-smoking requirements and information to be distributed indicating the harmful effects of secondhand smoke, and that this information would be provided by an outside source, either the county or representatives of Heart Lung Cancer Association. With that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Watson. Do we have questions for Mr. Watson? We have six public comment cards as well. Ms. Irwin.
Mr. Watson, do most of these units have their own ventilation system?
I don't know that I could address that specifically. Rick Schroeder from Mini Mansions is in the audience. I don't know whether they have individual, it was not a question asked on the survey.
Okay, and I still, maybe you could give me a more thorough answer on why we're not moving toward grouping smokers, clustering smokers. I know there's some difficulty with that, but it seems that that would be a very effective thing to do, more effective than buffers or some of the other options.
Truly, you know, reasonable consideration. The, the problem that the affordable housing providers have stated in their discussions with the, through the stakeholder group, is that, especially with the special needs population, as well as the, the mix of affordability, unit size, there will be times, possibly often times, wherein a vacant unit will require a special needs individual of a certain income level, and of a certain bedroom size, and the ability to take the next on the waiting list, whether they be a smoker or non-smoker, would require the placing, or at least the, the decision that that person has to make to step into a restricted unit or non-restricted unit, as opposed to wait for the next available unit. And as Mini Mansions, being the largest provider of special needs housing in the, in the community, has has indicated, that is a significant hardship for them to impose at this time.
But is there any effort made at all to try and cluster smokers in one area? I understand there are these, that there are exceptions, especially for, if you have to take the next person on the waiting list, but it seems that the end goal should be that you try to cluster smokers in one area.
Rick offered to, Mr. Schroeder offered to help us draft guidelines. He has sent me a copy that I've just really begun to review, and clearly in that guidelines there is indication that to the, you know, best feasible opportunity to cluster the units would be made, but to have the strict restriction on a building, as a non-smoking building, that has a mix of income and bedroom size, and other regulations imposed by the financing of that unit, may cause difficulty at times, and although I think the intent would be there to cluster where possible, the restriction is a hardship.
Thank you.
Mr. Gillette.
Thank you. Could I go back to your panel eleven on your PowerPoint presentation, just for clarification?
I believe it's on the, at least it's on my screen, page eleven, did you?
No, not page, page six, panel eleven.
Well, if I can figure out how to get to a...
Well, just give him the hard copy.
Okay. Do you want it on screen, or do you need?
It's not necessary, Ken, it's, it's a relatively simple que, I think it's a simple question. Okay, okay, and that is sixty-six percent of the units reserved as non-smoking, with exception of special needs housing, where percent would be fifty percent. What are those, what's that special need, is that people with marijuana prescriptions, or what, what is that?
No, it, special needs is a affordable housing term wherein it would be for homeless, disabled, wherein the funding for that unit is targeting a special needs population, primarily a mental disability of some sort, and there are restrictions with respect to income levels that would be coupled with that special needs population, and that's where part of the, or at least the majority of the heartburn comes with respect to the restrictiveness, or the requirement of restricting the units, wherein it relieves, it reduces the flexibility to place the right person that meets the special needs population in the appropriate unit that comes available.
I'm not sure what you said. It was long and detailed, but I, just taking it in context the way it appears here, it sounds like if someone has that special need designation, then they could, part of that special need could include that they're able to smoke wherever they're placed. Is that?
That is not necessarily the definition of special needs under this context.
Okay, one other quick question. There were, there were several references, or references in your report to Mini Mansions. Has the area housing authority been a full-time participant or full participant in this whole discussion prior to this, this presentation, request for action?
They have, they've been at the table as a, as a primary stakeholder. They do not have any of their projects within the city of Thousand Oaks that have a, that currently have a no, non-smoking restriction on it.
But that could change at any time, right?
This, this project is prospective, so in the event of a future project that we work with the area housing authority, or any other nonprofit provider, wherein we are a financial participant, yes, we would impose this policy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Dr. Clancy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Ms. Albano a question, that is, is there any way that this policy can be construed to be discriminatory toward a particular segment of our population?
When the council, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, members of the public, when this policy was first adopted by the council, the city did have legal counsel, outside legal counsel that worked with staff in developing it, and that did opine in the past that it would not be found discriminatory. I as well have, since I've been here, looked at it, and do not believe that it really poses any type of discrimination per se. It is something that the council is really using their contractual power because of the fact that they are putting money into a project to require that certain parts of it are set aside for non-smokers, and although smoking itself may be a legal thing to do, there's no constitutional privacy or other right that is recognized by anyone for smokers.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I wasn't here for the last go around. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Bill, leave opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Watson, the, picking up on where Mr. Gillette left off, the special needs, are you saying that people with certain disabilities tend to be smokers? Is that what we're saying?
I think first I'd like to clarify that the term special needs, I probably should have more appropriately defined it as supportive housing projects, and they, they are for individuals that have special needs, typically a mental or disability of some sort. Directly to your question as a result of whether or not they are smokers or not, I think I would rely on the housing professional to describe, define his, the population served better than I could. I might have a personal opinion, but I don't know that it's really relevant as to whether or not they are more smokers or non-smokers than, I don't have any evidence that says they are. I rely on the, I would rely on Rick Schroeder or Doug Tapkin to provide a direct answer to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We do have, Mr. Schroeder will be available for questions in the council. All right, we have some public comment cards, starting with Jack Nickel, followed by Esther Schiller, followed by Robert Levin. If the speaker cards, Ms. Schiller, if you could start making your way up, and sit in the chair there, we can move quickly, and then Mr. Levin as well. Good evening, Mr. Nickel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jack Nickel. I'm a member of the Board of the American Lung Association of California, statewide board. I'm also a member of the shareholders committee that's been considering this issue. Unfortunately, I was not at the last meeting that produced the consensus that was reported on by the staff report, so I'm going to take some liberty in my comments about that consensus. I strongly support the consensus in the staff report about increasing the number of units set aside as smoke-free to two-thirds. And I strongly support the notion that the pro-health groups should be able to work with the residents of Mini Mansions on determining whether, what the best way is to protect themselves from exposure to secondhand smoke. However, I have a very strong different opinion about the issue of grouping smokers and non-smokers. Back in the nineteen nineties, or nineteen seventies, actually, I was in, I was flying on a plane that was owned by an Eastern European country, and they had separate smoking and non-smoking sections in their aircraft, and it was divided right down the aisle, so that by definition, everyone who was in the non-smoking section was sitting right next to a smoker. Now, if this was laughable, but in fact, ladies and gentlemen, this is exactly what the policy that you adopted has been implemented in Mini Mansions. What they've done is they put the smoking units wherever it was convenient to do so, not grouping them, virtually guaranteeing that every non-smoking unit was next to a smoking unit, or at least potentially next to a smoking unit. I agree there may be difficulties in administering a change of this sort for your housing authorities, but it is worth the effort to figure out how to do that, and if you actually give a mandate to your housing nonprofits to produce that result, they will produce it. And I gave you an award on behalf of the American Lung Association two years ago when you made a breakthrough position that you, you adopted two years ago. At that time, all of us had the complete expectation that in implementing the policy that you passed, that you would group smoking and non-smoking units together, one-hundred percent expectation that you would do that. That's not the way it's worked out. We urge you to correct that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Esther Schiller, followed by Robert Levin, and our third speaker, if he could move to the podium, Alan Zovar. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Esther Schiller. I live in Thousand Oaks in Newberry Park. I'm the executive director of SAFE, which stands for Smoke Free for Everyone. We have grants from the LA County Department of Health Services and the American Lung Association of California to work on the issue of drifting tobacco smoke in multi-unit housing. Much has happened since two thousand and four, when the city council first took up this issue. The California Tax Credit Allocation Committee last year offered an incentive to developers of subsidized housing applying for tax credits. Tax credits are used to build affordable subsidized housing. These developers would be awarded a point if they promised to build housing with fifty percent of the units next to each other as non-smoking. Forty developers used that point in their grant application, some of them offering to build totally non-smoking projects. In Maine, their tax credit allocation committee awarded one point if all of the units were to be non-smoking. At its meeting in November two thousand and six, and we're trying to keep up with all of this, but it's, it's happening, cascading. At its meeting in November two thousand and six, the housing authority of the city of Rancho Mirage adopted a no-smoking policy for all of its residential complexes. Current residents are grandfathered in, and the city council approved the new policy on its consent calendar. According to Jim Bergman, who is co-director of the Smoke Free Environments Law Project in Michigan, smoke-free public housing has quadrupled in the past two and a half years. In July two thousand and four, there were just seven local public housing authorities in the U.S. which had adopted smoke-free policies, not sections, but smoke-free policies for one or more of their apartment buildings. As of December thirty-first, two thousand and six, twenty-eight local housing authorities had adopted smoke-free policies for some or all of their apartment buildings. However, this is a very slow pace when you consider all of the housing authorities that exist in the, in the United States. Perhaps it is, and that's why city councils are necessary, perhaps it is difficult to create smoking and non-smoking sections in subsidized housing. Perhaps it is for that reason that more and more providers of subsidized housing are adopting totally non-smoking policies. We will be delighted to work with the Health Department, the Housing Authority, and Mini Mansions to move toward that goal in Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Robert Levin, followed by Alan Zovar, and then we have Rick Schroeder and Doug Tapkin for questions. Good evening, Mr. Levin.
Good evening, thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. Members of the council, mayor, my name is Dr. Robert Levin, I'm a physician, I'm the county health officer, and as such, I'm the health officer as well for Thousand Oaks. It's my job and obligation to bring you evidenced base information upon which you can make decisions, and also to advocate for changes which improve the public health in this county. Secondhand smoke is a real threat. Secondhand smoke, to make it, to be brief, gets everywhere. It gets from one room into the next room, it gets from one apartment into other apartments, not necessarily contiguous apartments, it can get from public spaces around buildings into the building, and from one building to another. There is no safe level of tobacco smoke. There is a dose-response curve. The highest levels of smoke present the most dangers, but even the smallest level of smoke present a health danger to other people. Secondhand smoke causes death from heart disease. Secondhand smoke exposure at the workplace, which in some ways can be seen as comparable to this, in fact, perhaps not even as intense as this situation, increases the chance of heart attack by fifty percent. Speaking about heart conditions primarily from a long list of, of health threats presented by secondhand smoke because of a lot of the kinds of people that are staying in this form of housing, they're at particular risk of heart disease and stroke. Legislation that prohibits smoking in restaurants, for instance, is followed by substantial decreases in respiratory symptoms and improved pulmonary function in employees. A citywide public ordinance reducing exposure to secondhand smoke in Pueblo, Colorado, was associated with a reduction in the amount of heart attacks in the entire population. Quitting and reducing smoking rates are higher among employees in work sites with smoking bans, and one could only assume that if there were a smoking ban in a housing situation, a similar thing would arise, more people would quit smoking. The motion before you is an improvement. What we would ultimately like to see in the Health Department is a complete ban on all smoking in public, in public housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Alan Zovar, followed by, I'm going to go to, looks like Yashid Damui, and then we'll have questions.
My name is Alan Zovar, I live in Thousand Oaks. I've been involved for the last twenty years in working to pass no-smoking ordinances. However, I was not a part, a member of the smoking policy group. But I do believe that no one should be breathing the tobacco smoke of others, especially where they live. Esther Schiller was kind enough to put together for me a summary, excuse me, summary of the survey of Mini Mansions, and I would like to share it with you this, this evening. Forty-eight percent of the residents in this survey said they've breathed tobacco smoke in the building where they live, and twenty-four percent, on page two, say that that secondhand smoke has drifted into their unit in the past year. Another bit of information on page four, twenty-eight percent of those surveyed said they are someone that they lived with, with a medical condition such as allergies, asthma, migraines, diabetes, heart disease, or high blood pressure, has suffered from the drifting tobacco smoke. On page five, thirty-three percent of households that have someone with such medical conditions has had secondhand smoke drift into their homes in the past year. I'd like to make two points. First, I cannot understand, as it's been mentioned earlier, but I'll repeat it, how residents can be protected from drifting tobacco smoke when the smoking permitted units are scattered throughout the buildings, just as in Jack Nickel's story about the airplane, and there's no separation of smoking or non-smoking units. It doesn't make sense. The staff report that shows this lack of separation of smokers and non-smokers must be rewritten so a separation will be created. Maximum separation from the harmful effects of tobacco smoke must be the goal. Secondly, both state and federal fair housing laws require reasonable accommodation for apartment residents with disabilities or chronic illnesses so that they can use and enjoy their premises. But what if a resident has a chronic illness and tobacco smoke is entering the unit on a regular basis and is making them sick? What if that resident complained to the fair housing organization, and the fair housing organization decided to take legal action? What would the city of Thousand Oaks, would the city of Thousand Oaks have any liability? So TO needs to protect themselves, and the best way they can do that is by maximum separation. It's the only thing that really makes sense. Sections don't work, and this is all under one roof, shared cohabitation, and there's got to be separation, or it's, it's pointless. Thank you very much. Oh, one other thing. According to the California Air Resources Board, tobacco smoke is in the same category as the most toxic automotive and industrial air pollutants. You wouldn't want it in your home, you wouldn't want to fill your home with that. Thank you very much.
Dr. Jim Damui, and then we'll have questions from Rick Schroeder and Doug Tapkin. Dr. Jim Damui, and then we'll have questions from Rick Schroeder and Doug Tapking.
Good evening, Mayor Fox. Honorable members of the city council, my name is Jamshi Damui. Friends call me Jim, it's a difficult name. I'm a professor of economics and co-director of Center for Leadership and Values at California Lutheran University. I was the principal researcher for this particular study, along with Dr. Jordan from Public Health. I'm here to answer any question that you may have about this study, this methodology, finding any other fine lines there that you may, would like, would like to ask me and shed some more light on it.
Okay.
At your disposal if you have any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Damui? All right. Thanks very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Pleasure.
All right, Rick Schroeder, questions only? I think we might have some questions for Rick. Or, you know what, Doug, why don't you guys both come up, and that way you can dish it out. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Rick Schroeder, executive director for Many Mansions.
Douglas Tapking, I'm the executive director for the area housing authority.
I'd be happy to answer some of the questions that have already been asked, and any more questions. There was a question with respect to what does it mean by special needs? Here we're talking about supportive housing, a housing for a specific population or a purpose. Generally, at Many Mansions, we're talking about housing for people that have been homeless and have a mental disability. And yes, the concern is that those people, especially those that have been homeless with a mental disability, they tend to smoke a lot more. There's a higher percentage of people, those residents that smoke, and our concern is that we do not want a policy that would force people to remain on the streets instead of coming into our housing. So that was one question. The other question is, Many Mansions, do we have central ventilation? No, we do not. We do not. So generally, people have their own air conditioning, heating units. It's not a centralized ventilation system. I think the major question, though, is why not group? Why not have two-thirds, and two-thirds of the buildings, and the other third, and the other third of the building? And here, I think I'd like to pick up on something that Mr. Watson had said when he first started. We have six hundred and fifty people on our waiting list. Six hundred and fifty people on our waiting list. Only four of our properties are under the one-third no-smoking requirement. If you're a smoker right now, and we go to this two-thirds requirement, you're going to be waiting, all things being equal, three times longer for housing. And you're going to be wait, and people wait a long time to get into our housing. But the grouping would only add to the problem. For example, our Richmond Terrace property is two buildings, that's a supportive housing building, two buildings. One building is two bedrooms, the other building is one bedrooms. But which building would we choose? We choose the two-bedroom building for no smoking? That means the person that needs a two-bedroom, that's a smoker, would never ever be able to live at Richmond Terrace. And that may be the most appropriate person, especially with a disability, for that person to live. So if we group the buildings, if all the units were the same, I would agree that we could group them. But all the units are not the same. Each unit has its own restrictions. Some are one bedrooms, some are two, some are three. Some units are for people at fifty percent of the area median income, some are for sixty percent, some are for twenty percent. They all have different qualifications, and we might find a situation for a person who's a smoker that would ultimately never ever qualify for our housing. And our primary goal is to house people. So that is why we're against the grouping. But if you adopt two-thirds, you have an awful lot of units that are not restricted. And I would disagree, because even the one-third is having the intended results. Based on the survey, very few people, less than the majority of the people in our housing, have even encountered tobacco smoke. Very few people report this as a serious problem or a concern. So I will answer, though, any other questions that you might have.
Thanks, Mr. Schroeder. Any questions? You did a good job of clarifying that. We appreciate it. Questions? Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Good evening, Mr. Schroeder. You mentioned that you have six hundred and fifty people on a waiting list. On page eight of the staff report, it says that at the time of the survey, there were seventeen units which were vacant. That seems like a high vacancy rate. What, how, can you explain that?
Well, we have, we have a total of four hundred units. So seventeen out of four hundred is a very small percentage. We do have people moving, transferring from property to property. People that do move out, we have to qualify those people before they can move in, in terms of income, maybe being homeless, maybe being disabled. That takes a couple of weeks to do that. So we often have units that are temporarily vacant, but we do fill them fairly quickly. But it does take a while. So at any given time, we will have open units.
Is Oak Creek Senior Villas, is that, does that have central air and heating? Was my understanding it did? Does that change?
Yeah. Oak Creek Senior Villas is the area housing authority's property. They are all individually. We did that as a design concept from the very beginning, the property. Originally designed as one simple central air conditioning, and we said that makes no sense any longer. So it's all individual at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Tapking. If, according to the survey, the majority of people, of tenants, for example, are supporting non-smoking, then why would it be difficult to group units?
Actually, the survey also says very clearly that roughly eighty-odd percent of them really don't care what you do tonight, they're not going to allow smoking in their unit. I mean, that's the opposite side of the question that you just asked. If you go to sixty-six percent, the reality is, is that units are going to be clumped. I have no idea where the statements are coming from tonight, where organizations like ours space people down the central aisle, or something along this line. In fact, when we do attempt to do no-smoking units, they are clumped. They have to be. It makes no sense to do it otherwise. The second reality that's out there is if we do have an individual who has a serious problem, as was pointed out earlier, and they bring in an issue relating to smoking, they're moved. It would be foolish for us as managers not to deal with an individual who has a serious issue along that line.
So when you say clumped, is it, are they grouped, or are they not grouped?
If sixty-six percent of your units are going to be no-smoking, they are by definition going to be located together, the vast majority of those units. Do the simple math, on a hundred units at that particular point, where is it going to be? Unless an organization very specifically goes down and says, Unit A is going to be smoking, Unit B is non-smoking, Unit C is smoking, Unit D is non-smoking, oh, wait a minute, now I've gotten to thirty percent, you can't, you can't make the math work on the number of units. They are going to be co-located. In fact, any good management organization is going to do that, which is what we do. The reality is, though, is if I have to put it in there, and you're telling me that you want all the buildings, you affect the financing, and you affect my ability, anybody's ability, to move people in and out of the project. I think Rick just explained that.
Right. If we were to just start at one time, and talk to everyone, and get them grouped, we could do that. But over time, that would break down. And over time, we'd be in a situation where we'd have to deny people, well, you can't live in Building A, and you can't live in Building B. But you can live in Building C, but we don't have any vacancies in Building C. Again, if we're just starting out, you could do that, but over time, that would break down, and that's in part why we oppose the grouping. But as Doug mentioned, if it is two-thirds, and in fact, only thirteen percent of our survey results, thirteen percent, state that they do smoke, it's very unlikely that you're going to encounter smoke from a neighbor.
Would you be willing to try out specific grouping on a trial basis?
No. We made that very clear. We said that during the groupings that we met with. We said that from the very beginning, when we addressed this issue two years ago.
Now, again, over time, I think, another thing that Mr. Watson had said is that we will reconvene in 2009. You know, the law of unintended consequences. We sat around our committee, thought of all the possible things that could go with this policy, but we don't know until we put it into effect. Let's see how the two-thirds goes, and then in 2009, maybe we increase it. Maybe that's when we start to do these things. But we don't exactly know what's going to happen. And I think we'd like to try the two-thirds first, before we get to the grouping.
You know what, gentlemen? You've done a good job explaining it. I don't want to keep going over, you know, material that's already been covered. Any other questions, Mr. Irwin?
Mr. Tapking, are your, are all your units, then, individual systems, the air conditioning Mr. Schroeder said all the Many Mansions.
All of our, all of our new units are, all of the units that we have been building are individually heated and air-conditioned. I would need to go back and look at some of the older public housing projects. They may or may not be. Anything that we're doing, anything that we're doing from, from this point on are.
Okay. Anything that this would apply to is.
Yes, they would be individually, most definitely.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? Yes, no? Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Okay. That concludes the speaker cards and the questions. What's the pleasure of the council? And again, I'd direct your attention to the green addendum, in the green. Mr. Minnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before we act on this, I just want to point out a couple of things here. One, the report before you is a, is really a committee report with the representatives represented here in the, in the audience, and they've worked at this for well over a year. And there was an extensive amount of give and take and compromise, and what you see in front of you is a compromise. And it really represents a continuum or an ongoing effort to effectively deal with the smoking issue. Council will recall, back in 2004, this body took a very bold step to be one of the first cities, not just in the state but in the country, to be as aggressive as you were dealing with the, the smoking issue at the one-third level. And tonight, the recommendation is to go to two-thirds, as well as, and fifty percent for the special needs residents. So please keep that in mind. And you heard from the two nonprofit housing authority executive directors here today, and they are primarily in the housing business, and they are the leader collectively together. They are the leader in the county in terms of producing affordable housing units, and we're very supportive of their efforts. And Doug Tapking represents the area housing authority, which is the city council's housing authority. So I just wanted to point that out. And again, we'll assess how this goes over the next year, or two, or three, and then perhaps come back to council with even more stringent recommendations, and maybe one day, get to the full hundred percent level. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Minnick. Dr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there are two points. I think unless we're willing to push for a hundred percent non-smoking, I think we need to realize that the mission of these two organizations is to house people. My, my preference would be to move staff recommendation, points one and two, as shown in the green packet.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
All right. Dr. Clancy moves recommendations one and two in the packet. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support the motion, because it seems to me that our overall goal, starting in 2004, and everything that we've done, is to move us towards creating as healthy of an environment in our publicly supported and subsidized housing as we possibly can. That's the goal, and that's the direction we're trying to go. I haven't heard in any of these discussions anything about personal responsibility or behavior modification for individuals. That, that seems to be left out of the discussion at all times. And yet, we're asking for public monies to be used to create and maintain these inventories of housing. And I was particularly, well, one piece of special interest was an Eastern Bloc airline with a no-smoking down the aisle. I flow an Aeroflot, and when they break out a hibachi behind me and start cooking, that's a little scary. So probably not the best example. But the point is that we're, we're trying to move in a, we're trying to move in a direction that would give us the healthiest environment that we can. And someone mentioned the liability issue. It seems to me that we're, we're protecting our position, the position of the taxpayers of this, this municipal corporation, when we continue to move in that direction. And I see the recommendations as a step, a very positive step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Ms. Bill De La Peña.
I would like to ask Mr. Clancy whether he would incorporate into his motion to direct staff to provide guidelines, or research the possibility of grouping units within the next two years? It seems to take about two years to come back with a report.
I'm satisfied with the efforts being made to group, and I appreciate the arguments that they've offered us.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Irwin?
Okay. Well, then, I'll ask if you would be willing to just add to every extent possible to cluster smokers and non-smokers.
Absolutely.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Did you want to comment on the motion?
Yes, I'm going to support the motion if you add that.
Okay. Ms. Bill De La Peña, did you want to comment, or?
No, no. Thank you.
I'm going to support the motion as stated, and I think we need to concentrate, with all respect to the folks that came down and spoke essentially for a smoke-free environment, mixing of interests. And the interest here, I think, Dr. Clancy, hit the nail on the head. These folks are trying to house people. And having worked in, in probably the number-one homeless area in the entire country, I can tell you that if it's a question between having a roof over your head, or living next to somebody that might smoke, that's a no-brainer. And I think both Mr. Schroeder and Mr. Tapking pointed out that if we go too far down this clustering road, we're going to have a very real challenge with housing people, and people that really need housing may not have the opportunity to have that housing if we get too restrictive with respect to our guidelines. That being said, I think we had good testimony here tonight, and based on the experts, that the reality of what we're trying to accomplish in terms of clustering is in fact what's going to occur. It may not be exactly perfect, but this is a work in progress. We've been congratulated as taking a leadership role that other cities haven't been willing to take. And so the committee is working well. We've made major strides in terms of accomplishing what we're all out to, and that's for people to live in a healthy, safe environment. But it starts with healthy, safe environment being off the street. That's what that has to start with. And then certainly, having a smoke-free environment has been recognized by our medical experts, and everybody is, as being healthy and the right thing to do. The final observation, and I'm not quite sure who made this observation or concern, would be that of litigation. And I would hope, I would hope that we would not be penalized as a city for being a leader in this area, that, that because we've stepped out, because we're trying to provide some leadership, that we're not now, you know, we find ourselves in litigation with respect to trying to accommodate these competing interests. Because that's a disincentive for any city, this city included, to take those bold steps, to go out and try to provide this type of housing, and at the same time, provide the type of healthy environment that we're, that we're trying to achieve. So with those comments, I'm certainly going to support the motion. And, and I think, as I said, I think we look forward to continuing to work within the committee process to see if we can make improvements. Dr. Clancy, did you have any final comments? Okay. Vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. That is approved. Appreciate everybody's comments on that. Very helpful. Thanks for coming down. All right. We'll move to item 9C. That is a departmental report. That's a request to initiate a municipal code amendment to establish parking standards for garden centers located citywide, also for concurrent processing of entitlement application for new garden center properties located on the southeast corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Taylor Court. And the staff presentation will be handled by Hader Awami.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The city's municipal code does not have a specific parking ratio for garden centers. The city uses parking requirements used for automobile dealerships and other open, open air sales, which requires one parking space for each one thousand square feet of gross floor area for display and sales, plus one space for each five thousand square feet over ten thousand square feet of lot area, or a minimum of one space for each employee, plus additional parking for commercial uses. Armstrong Garden Center has filed applications requesting to Armstrong Garden Center has filed applications requesting to construct a garden center at the southeast corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Taylor Court, and using the above-mentioned parking requirements, a total of 53 parking spaces would be required. Armstrong believes that this number is unreasonably high for garden centers, and thus the request for municipal code amendment tonight to establish specific parking standards for garden centers, which would reflect the actual need for the use. Based on the information attached to the applicant's letter in the packet, staff believes that it is appropriate to initiate that amendment and direct staff to research the issue and prepare a report to the planning commission for public hearing and recommendation back to the city council. Additionally, the applicant is requesting that the city council authorize concurrent processing of the project's entitlements with the municipal code amendment. Staff also recommends that the council authorize this process, which would allow the commission and council to review the proposed project in conjunction with the proposed municipal code amendment. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Alwami? Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Alwami. If a business is, is required to follow the municipal code, can you explain why a nursery would require or need, I should say, fewer than these 53 parking spaces?
Again, as I mentioned, the code does not specifically have a parking ratio for nurseries or garden center. It's grouped together as open air sales and dealership, automobile dealership. From initial research that I've, staff done for other cities, they have specific parking ratio for nursery, plant nursery and garden centers, which we don't have in the city. And the ratio is different than what we have.
Can you give us an example?
Of other cities?
Of other cities.
Yeah, I don't have all the information here. The initial, I do have.
Page 71.
Riverside County, open air sales, plant nursery is 1,000, and up to 20 spaces maximum. That's one of them. Victorville is, a nursery is one parking space for each 1,000 square feet, a lot area for sales and display only. There are similar cities that have similar requirements as the city, but our, other cities has completely different standards. Glendale, for nursery and garden supplies, is 1 to 250 for the building itself, and 1 to 1,000 square feet for outdoor area only. So a lot of cities have different requirements, and some of them have specific standards for plant nurseries or garden centers, which the city does not.
Do you know anything about the nursery in Calabasas? I don't want to say the name, it's a competition, but parking is an awful problem. You cannot ever find any parking at that nursery in Calabasas by the freeway.
I'm aware of that. I, I know where it is. My understanding is probably it's one of the older nurseries around in the area, and over time, it just started as a small nursery and became popular, and it's an existing, what we consider here, legal non-conforming use. Same thing we have in the nursery in Newbury Park, that it's been existing for many, many years, and that's legal non-conforming. They don't have enough parking on site, but it's an existing use. So I could definitely contact the city of Calabasas if the council initiated amendment, and ask them for the parking demand, or what the issues they have with the nursery, and how many parking spaces, and square footage, and all the information that they need.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions for staff on this item? You know, I have a, did you have a question, Mr. Irwin? No. Let me ask a question of the city attorney, and this is relative to information that was provided to the council, more from a planning and consistency perspective. A couple of weeks ago, we had, we dealt with an issue on the Boulevard, and it was the consensus of the council that we wanted to wait for the specific plan, which is being generated by the Boulevard property owners, before we made any decisions on the Boulevard. Notwithstanding the need for Armstrong, and the fact that they provide a great service, and we need them in our community, I guess my question for Ms. Albano is, if we're going to be consistent with our findings for properties on the Boulevard, don't we really need to do it across the board?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public and staff. What I would say to the council is that at this point in time, with this item being brought to you early, is that the council, as they did last time, since it involves a legislative action, can stop, look, and see whether this is within what the council believes its vision for the Boulevard is, or what they'd like to possibly see, or wait to see from the specific plan. So the council, there's nothing that mandates that you do the same, same thing as that night, but clearly, it's within your purview to make the decision that you're not willing to go ahead with this, and even initiating the legislative action, because you're not quite sure that you want to see that use or that type of thing on that location on the Boulevard pending the outcome of the specific plan. And the idea is that the specific plan's being worked on by the Boulevard Association, and that it will then be presented to council, and that the process does take some time. But I think more important, or just as importantly, is what's council's vision is for the Boulevard, and how this fits into that vision.
Yeah, okay, I think you made a good point on that. Mr. Alwami, let me ask you a question. If council was inclined to, as we did in, in the past case, kind of have a wait-and-see approach to properties on the Boulevard, notwithstanding that there are going to be, there are difficult properties on the Boulevard, we recognize that. I think the last one that we dealt with was, was also one of those. In dealing with Armstrong, are there other properties that staff could identify not on the Boulevard that could accommodate this type of use?
I think you'd probably be, ask the Armstrong representative here tonight to see if they looked for other places. They've been working with Gary Water, our economic development manager, for a location in the city to relocate, and they could answer that question more than staff can.
Okay. From a planning perspective, we're, we're looking at a specific plan along the Boulevard. And from my perspective, I, I see the Boulevard as really from Westlake to Moore Park. I think we need to have a, a very broad view as we look at the specific plan, recognizing we're probably not going to change the auto mall, and the lakes is probably going to be here. But we really do need to take a kind of a, a macro approach from both anchors. Would staff prefer that council not piecemeal some of these projects and wait for, for a specific plan? Is that going to put staff in a, in a better position to evaluate, you know, a specific plan along the Boulevard, as opposed to, you know, kind of do it in a piecemeal fashion?
Not knowing what that, how, how long the specific plan will be, and the actual land uses, it could be two, three years from now. My understanding that Armstrong has a timetable, they have to move or relocate their business from where they are. Again, not knowing what, what the outcome would be, I, staff, again, it's up to the city council tonight to decide if--
Okay.
--they need to wait for the specific plan or not.
You danced around that very nicely, Mr. Alwami.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was also going to speak, you referenced action of the council a few weeks ago. Not only did we, did we slow down some things on the eastern end of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, we moved $1 million of community development block grant money, which we don't know if it's ever going, if it's going to be replaced, but we moved it, we moved it for application to affordable housing in direct response to the anticipated development of the specific plan. And if you recall, this particular piece of property, several years ago, when you and I walked Thousand Oaks Boulevard and talked to all of those property owners, this is the kind of area that they were looking for, for some public parking relief to serve this whole zone. The uniqueness of the topography here lent itself to a public parking area. It would also open up some of the automotive businesses across the street that could relocate up into areas like Taylor Court to get them off from Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and create more customer-friendly retail opportunities that would be more in line with an enhanced shopping experience on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We also have another situation that's coming, and that's the, the possible relocation of Cal U Rent, to get it out of that particular zone, and get it up onto one of these side streets with all of its resulting noise and all of those things, so that it can also be used for higher-end or, or better or more compatible retail opportunities on the Boulevard. All of those things would be consistent with this specific plan. Now, we, we took the step, we, we held off on, on eastern Thousand Oaks Boulevard, we moved the money. As far as I'm concerned, and I believe we need Armstrong, there's no question about this, this project, but I don't think, I think until this is done, if this goes, this is one of the last opportunities for some sort of, of public parking area to help better serve and generate commerce in this particular area, which has the potential to be a high, high retail area. So those are some of the things that, that all of us have been involved in in one way or another with the history of this particular piece of property, and that's what I'm keeping in mind as, as this discussion continues. I think it's premature at this point to do anything with this piece of property. We've committed to waiting for this specific plan from the, from the Business Improvement District. I know our patience can't be forever, but I think, I think we have to give it, give it as good a shot as possible to wait until it's ready, and encourage them to bring that forward. Thank you.
Ms. Irwin, did you have a question?
Are they going to speak from Armstrong, the owner?
We do have three speaker cards, just who's best positioned. I think what council's looking at, who the representative is, is have you looked at alternative locations, not on the Boulevard? And how can we assist you in that? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Montean Wright, and I live in Channel, California, principal of Armstrong Garden Center. To address this, we have been looking at other properties over the last four years, as our current condition and building is deteriorating, and we have not been able to move forward with where the current landlord at the mall. We have searched high and low, and we have found what we believe is the best property for Armstrong Garden Center with what we bring to a community. Our new look, what we're anticipating, and I know that a lot of you haven't seen this, is Armstrong is a 119-year-old company, and going back to a simpler time is what our, is what our direction is for our customer. And our customer has designed our garden centers and where they want to shop with it. And looking at a, a downtown area, or more of a historical feel, or a pedestrian look, is what we have desired. And this, this particular site is the one that we have worked diligently on, and we are on somewhat of a, of a timeframe. I know that is not of importance to, to all, but it is to Armstrong, of how long we have until we actually have to be able, one, to move off our existing site, and two, with the timelines on this particular site to develop.
Let me ask you a question. I recognize that this may be the best site from your perspective. You're also hearing from the council that we don't know. I think I want to, I just want to point out, we don't know what's really the most appropriate site. Given that, have you identified other sites on the Boulevard that would work for you? That's really the question we need to know.
We have not found another property on the Boulevard that works for us.
I mean, throughout the community, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
We have looked, like, for the last four years, we have approached different properties that just have not worked for us financially or size-wise.
Okay. Any, okay, thanks very much. Okay, we don't have any speaker cards on that, it was just the representatives from Armstrong. What's the pleasure of the council on this item? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on, based on my earlier comments, this, this is not about Armstrong. Armstrong is a, is a superb corporate neighbor in the community, it's needed, et cetera, et cetera. We're dealing with some, the, the city, for your information, has never had a downtown. We're dealing with a commercial strip which has grown, and now we're at a point where we're going to try and with using, actually using this Civic Arts Plaza and its component and the other things, go out in both directions to create a downtown area. We have a Business Improvement District, which is developing this specific plan, and it's my hope that we can, we can encourage them and, and get this thing done, so we'll know what we're dealing with through the entire, the entire length of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And to move ahead with this project at this time would just take that piece of property, which is a very critical piece of property, out of the inventory and out of the discussion. And I'm not willing to do that. So it's my motion to deny the recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Gillette moves to deny recommendations one and two. Discussion on that, Ms. Irwin?
Okay, I am, I'm not going to support the motion. First of all, I, Armstrong is an existing business, this is a difficult, this will be a difficult property to develop with the oak tree there also. When we looked at it last week, or a few weeks ago, we were looking at a change of zoning, and this is not for a change of zoning, this is something very reasonable, which is looking at what is the appropriate number of parking spots for a garden center. And I can envision a garden center in a pedestrian-friendly Boulevard quite easily. I absolutely cannot envision storage units, which is why I voted against the storage units, and, and why I am going to be supporting, or not supporting the motion, but why I would like to see Armstrong at this location.
Further discussion, Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you. I will state my reasons as to why I will not support the motion. If, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association is developing this specific plan, if we want a moratorium, then we need to implement a moratorium if no one is allowed to build anymore for the next two to three years. That is not good for business or the economy in Thousand Oaks at all. As part of the specific plan or vision that the city has for Thousand Oaks Boulevard, a nursery would be a perfect fit, in my opinion, to be part of any pedestrian-friendly sort of development along T.O. Boulevard. It would break up some of the monotony, perhaps, some of the buildings, some of the, perhaps, parking structures, who knows what we will see on T.O. Boulevard. It will be breaking up that sort of picture. It is a, it will also be a focal point. It is right, or I should say, near the freeway, the 23 on-ramp, and you will be able to see that from the overpass, you will be able to see green rather than just buildings. I think that having a nursery on T.O. Boulevard is a wonderful idea, I think the location is excellent, and unless we have a moratorium in place, we, we should allow this to go forward. I too, two weeks ago, voted against the storage units on T.O. Boulevard because it was a very difficult parcel, and storage units are not suited for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We have industrial areas, and areas zoned for industrial use, where that is much more appropriate. And for those very reasons, I will not support the motion.
Okay, Dr. Clancy?
You're assuming I have a comment?
Okay. I'll jump in.
No, I definitely do. I'm more inclined to not support the motion. I too agree that Armstrong is a longtime resident of our community, it provides a very specialized service, and I think that just coming off the freeway, there's nothing much nicer to look at. Well, that's not altogether true, but it would be very pleasant to see a well-done nursery right in front of the driver, and also, it is a good break of other activity on the Boulevard. I think if I had a better feel for how long the Boulevard Association was going to take to generate this specific plan or the recommendations for a specific plan, even if the terms of what the, what the area of interest is going to be, will it terminate from, go from Westlake to the 23 freeway, or will it really go to Moore Park Road, then I might be more inclined to do something else. I wonder if there's any, any benefit to passing or recommending passage of recommendation one, and not the concurrent processing of entitlements. Would that accomplish anything at all? at all?
Let me, let me just offer a couple of comments, not one way or the other, and I'd ask the council, you know, this is one where, you know, maybe stating a position in, in even the motion that Mr. Gillette put out there, you know, might not have been the most constructive thing to do, and so let me just offer a couple of things. First, you know, by way of history, Mr. Gillette's right, and this would be new to, I think, everybody on the council. As it turns out, this parcel is a key parcel with respect to a specific plan in the Boulevard. You can go to any number of the past suggested uses of the Boulevard, and this parcel in particular was looked at for parking, and I'm glad Mr. Gillette brought that up. The other piece that council needs to be aware, that I can assure you, and I have no idea what the specific plan is going to come back with, but I will assure the council that parking will be a challenge on the Boulevard. We won't achieve anywhere near what we're, what we're looking at, and at least some of the things that we're hearing, if we don't have identified parking on the Boulevard. And you don't need to look any farther than other cities that have done the type of thing that we're looking at on the Boulevard without providing public parking spaces, to get people out of their cars so they can walk. It's just a planning principle that, that's reality. The other thing is, we had a, a nursery on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It's not there anymore. Okay? And so, I would point out that, and I don't know if the business issues with that were, it was sold, and now we have a retail use there, but I would just suggest to the council that we had a nursery on the Boulevard, we don't have one there now, there was probably a good reason for it from the business perspective. The other thing that council needs to think about is a nursery, I would suggest, is a destination business. If you need to go to the nursery, you're going to find it. It's not like you're driving along the Boulevard and you say, "Whoa, hey, I need to pick up a plant," so you'll just drive in there. A nursery is something that you're going to be planning on going to, you're going to go to, and you're going to find that nursery, I think regardless of if it's on the Boulevard or, as Mr. Gillette points out, if it's on a side street off the Boulevard. The other thing is, I don't know where we came up with this two or three years for a specific plan. The information I remember, and I think Mr. Minnick can identify this, is we're going to have a specific plan by summertime. We're talking months at the most, okay? We're not talking two or three years down the road. So, I think, you know, at a minimum, we need to slow down and take a look at what that specific plan might be, maybe we could at least put this on hold. If there's a concern from council in terms of timeliness, again, I want to emphasize, this is not about Armstrong, we've been great for the community, we want you in the community, we just want you in the right spot. And at this point in time, we just don't have enough information, and we're throwing things out in terms of two or three years, we don't have any, that's not, that's not accurate information. I think, like I said, I think we're looking at getting a specific plan probably by summer or certainly thereafter. So, again, just to summarize, this is a key parcel, it was key to whatever we're going to do on the Boulevard in terms of parking. The issue of landscape, a landscape business on the Boulevard is something that I think we need to look at, we really, really need to look at. From my perspective, I don't know how that coincides with some of the plans that we've talked about on the Boulevard. It may, but I think that's something that we need to look at. So, I just offer that to council for, you know, some more information with respect to what we've done on the Boulevard and moving forward. Finally, the issue of a moratorium. I think Ms. Bill De La Pena makes a point, if in fact we're going to say that no development is going to occur on the Boulevard, I think that's a, you know, a fairly aggressive stance for the council to, to make. I also think it's something that we probably need to think about. If, if we're going to, if it were going to be two or three years, then yeah, that's a, that's a decision council should make. So, I think that Ms. Bill, Bill De La Pena makes a good point, I just don't think we're there in terms of timing. I don't think that we're going to have this two- or three-year hiatus, and so, those would be my comments, and I would respectfully submit those to the council for consideration on, on Mr. Gillette's motion. Dr. Glancy?
Thanks. I think, considering that I didn't have knowledge of a lot of what you said, and I don't really appreciate the ramifications of the loss of that spot potentially, I would then offer an amendment that we adopt recommendation one. And not two. And let me, let me, let me say, so what that does is it gets the, the resolution or the municipal code amendment on the road, which I think needs doing. I think that nurseries have been penalized in, well, certainly in our area, to be lumped with any open-air retail area, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I think their parking requirements are less than what that would indicate. So, I see no damage at all in initiating a municipal code amendment to look at those parking requirements. It doesn't commit us to any action on the specific piece of property. So, I'll offer that amendment.
Okay, and Mr. Gillette, maybe before you, you accept or, or deny that request for the amendment, let me ask Mr. Minnick to definitively tell the council what the timelines are, because I think he has some information there. Mr. Minnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as council is aware, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Properties Owners Association did succeed with their request for a Business Improvement District, and that process is, is working well, funds have been raised. The Boulevard Group has also hired a consultant to prepare a draft specific plan for the Boulevard, and that's, they've been at this for a number of months. And as the mayor indicated, this draft specific plan will come before the council, it's just about done, but it'll come before the council, probably no later than July. From that point, if staff, if council so directs, the specific, the draft specific plan will be turned over to city staff, and city staff will go through the EIR process, hold public hearings, and so on, and it'll come back to, to council for a final specific plan. And it is our intention as staff to expedite that and to get that back to council at the latest within 12 months from July, hopefully quicker, but we will make it one of our top priorities, and in fact, it's one of council's top priorities, one of your top priorities for fiscal year 2007/08. So, not two to three years, worst case, 18 months from this point, probably sooner.
And let me also, also offer, nothing precludes a council, once we get a little bit of a snapshot of what we're going to be looking at, I think we're in a better place, and this goes to the issue of moratorium, we're in a better place to not have to be a concern about that, because we're going to have at least a little bit of a roadmap, and requests that come in that, that fit that roadmap, we're going to be able to move on. Ms. Albano, do you want to comment?
Just briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to briefly speak to the moratorium. One, it's not on the agenda tonight, but just to be clear, what was before you two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, whenever we took that action, and tonight, these are legislative actions. That's why the council has the authority to do what it chooses to do and not talk about the M-word. And clearly, if something came in that was not looking for variances or waivers or met everything on the property, council would be obliged to treat it differently than when there's a legislative action and you have total discretion in front of you. So, I just wanted to clarify that one issue. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Mr. Gillette, we have an amendment on the table.
And it's my motion, that's the reason that I brought up the history of this particular piece of property and linked it to what we've been doing currently. I think the more draconian actions that we could take, it's not time for that yet, or time for us to even consider that yet, but I think that at this point, there, it's my preference to leave the property alone at this time and wait for this specific plan to see, because I know what's going, I don't know, I believe that there are going to be certain zones on Thousand Oaks Boulevard already that we know that they're choking because of lack of public parking. And if, if the stated goal of the Business Improvement District is to heighten the pedestrian accessibility and friendliness and activity of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, there are going to have to be some locations of public parking areas. Skyline and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, this location, down closer to Moore Park Road, this, this has to happen if we're going to achieve the overall goal of creating this downtown area. And so, until that's done, and I too, my assumption was that this specific plan, we would have it sometime by the summertime, and, and as you mentioned, and I mentioned two or three times, it's worth mentioning again, this isn't about Armstrong. There's no question about the value of this, of this company in our, in our community. This is about long-range planning and what our needs are going to be well into the future, and trying to come back after the fact and locate these types of areas. I know what Santa Barbara went through when they tried to do that kind of rehabilitation on State Street, and what they went through converting buildings, buying buildings to create public parking lots. Here's, here's one that we've already identified, that it's potentially in the ideal place to accommodate that, a work of public art on the corner, the oak tree in the center of it, it lends itself to a very attractive venue for a specific need to serve a broader region and a broader need. So, I, I'm not inclined to accept any motions or modifications, the motion is that we, we deny the recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, let me just ask this, staff, staff, my, going back to my planning commission days, item number one, adopt a resolution initiating a municipal code amendment, that's just for the parking standards, right? That's not specific to any location. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so if we moved on that, that would just, that would apply to anything, anywhere, it would just be for landscape business, open-air issues, that would have nothing to do with Mr. Gillette's motion of, or the intent of his motion, which is to not make a decision on the Boulevard. Is that correct?
It would apply citywide.
Citywide.
It's not site-specific.
And it does not lock the council in, does not lock the council in for a location along the Boulevard for a landscape?
That's correct.
Okay. Does it even move us in that direction?
Well, it does, and one other point that, that staff wanted to make is, is just in terms of the two points, the first item that you have, recommendation number one is a legislative act, of course, the municipal code amendment. Number two is the, the one that deals with the concurrent processing. Just for the council's, you know, background, if it were to consider approving only one and not two, it's possible that the actual project, if it weren't considered concurrent with the municipal code amendment, would be heard only by the planning commission. If there are no reasons for it to be considered by the city council, the planning commission could be in a position to consider and approve the project, and, and absent an appeal, the council would not see the actual project. So, this is going back to another point that Councilmember Glancy made earlier, so I want to clarify that.
Okay, good point. Thanks for that. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark, I appreciate, I appreciate that clarification. That's not mine, the application of the revised parking standards would have application anywhere, that they'd find a location and might help them, or help, help this industry and this particular company, should they find another location. So, that, I will accept that amendment to, to my motion.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to read some comment.
You got it.
Okay, so, the, we, we need the motion for staff's perspective, and see if I can frame this. The motion Mr. Gillette is making is to deal with the parking standards only, not specific to any location, and certainly not specific to Armstrong. Okay, we're just looking at revising parking standards for landscape-type businesses. Is that?
And this motion gives relief to this business, regardless of where they would, where they would go in.
All right. Staff clear on that motion? Okay, that amendment, so it's clear? Okay. Discussion on that, Ms. Irwin?
Actually, I'm still not going to be supporting the motion, but I do want to ask Ms. Albano if, doesn't, couldn't this decision then just be made at the planning commission, so it's never going to come back up to council if, if the...
Yeah.
I think regardless, we would want it to come back up to council.
What I want to say is, if the initiation, let me put it this way, this project at this location where they have the application pending cannot be approved by anyone without this code amendment taking place, so that, just so we're all clear. So, if there's initiation of the code amendment, that has to precede anybody considering the project, and the code amendment would have to come to council first. So, that, that council will have to consider. But you're right, what Mr. Town is saying, that if you allow concurrent processing, then yes, that it could end up at the planning commission and not, unless it's appealed. And there are specific ways that a council could appeal, but they're very limited. There's a way for us to do it the right way, we all know that it was done wrongly, but we can do it. So, in that case, you know, there's that possibility, because I'm looking at what they need. So, part of it may be really dependent on what comes out of the study, because you're just initiating code amendment, it doesn't mean that that's a done deal, because it's going to have to come back with what it will look like and what the recommendations are, and time to study it a little bit. I hope that answers your question.
Right. Any other questions on the motion? Oh, is it, Ms. Bill De La Pena?
I still will not be able to support the motion. I do support adopting the resolution, however, I mean, initiating the municipal code amendment, but the actual motion I will not be able to support. Staff did say, did mention the number of two to three years, it may not be that long, but we know it will be at least 18 months. I am concerned about that, as we had discussed as a council, that community meetings will be held regarding the specific plan for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. That is supposed to be included, and I don't know how that could be accomplished within, within the next few months. If anything, it has to, I mean, it has to happen before this comes before the council, even though we will have public hearings on it. And again, I will just restate that a nursery is a very good location at that particular, is a very good use of that particular location, and I believe that one way or another, we will find other parking spaces, once we have the specific plan before us, but I, I, again, will not be able to support the motion, however, I do support, in the very least, adopting the resolution initiating municipal code amendment.
Okay, and what I'm going to suggest to the maker of the motion is that we break these up.
Yeah.
Do one, then two.
That's right, I was just going to come back with the same thing, so that everybody has an opportunity to vote on the pieces that they, that they like or dislike. Let me modify my motion, that, first of all, to, to approve item one, recommendation one, to adopt the attached resolution initiating the municipal code amendment, MCA 2007, 70062, and just stop with that. That's, that's the motion.
All right. Mr. Gillette moves item number one, recommendation number one, discussion on that. Okay, none? Vote, please.
It shows 4-1 with Councilmember Glancy dissenting. Is that incorrect? 5-0?
Okay, that is approved. What do you want to do with number two? Mr. Gillette?
Okay, and number two, that, number two, we decline, that the motion is to decline the recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Gillette moves to deny recommendation number two. Discussion? Okay. Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-1, Councilmember Irwin dissenting.
Okay, so that's going to be 3-2. That is approved. Okay. That is approved. The motion was to deny, and it was approved 3-2. Okay. All right, staff clear on that? Okay. All right, again, I want to emphasize to Armstrong, I hope that you guys understand we're looking for you to be, stay in the community, but we're looking at a broader issue with respect to our Boulevard. Okay, we'll move to item 9D, that's our last committee or department report, that's the City of Thousand Oaks Legislative Platform. Ms. Leva?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. The item you have before you is the 2007 Legislative Platform. In 2006, council adopted the official legislative program and curricula for the city. That included the adoption of a 2006 Legislative Platform. Pursuant to this 2006 program, staff is to return annually with a new legislative platform for council's consideration and input. In preparing the 2007 Legislative Platform, staff fused various, various components in creating the platform. One of them is council goals, the second of which is council-specific priorities, the third is department input, as well as department needs. The fourth component is the review of the state... The fourth component is the review of the state and national platforms advocated by the League of California Cities and National League of Cities. This year, the 2007 Legislative Platform has a few new items for your consideration. The first, which is on page 76 of your council packet, is number eight, to advocate for fair implementation and distribution of state infrastructure bond funds to assure the city has access to receiving an adequate share for local improvements and programs. In November 2006, California overwhelmingly approved the state's infrastructure bond package as proposed by the governor. And in ensuring we receive adequate share for our locality, we've added number eight under the tenants of local budget. On page 77, we added two additional tenants, public safety and number one is to support legislation that protects funding and resources for both Thousand Oaks Police Department and Ventura County Fire District to maintain the level of services consistent in sustaining the city's ranking as one of the nation's safest cities. And number two of G is to support legislation that promotes the efforts of the Thousand Oaks Police Department in its role to serve and protect the community with A, with relevance to local enforcement, and B, without reasonably infringing on individual Second Amendment rights. And the third additional component is H, elections, and that is to support legislation that promotes open and efficient county and statewide elections. If there are any additions to the platform or any questions?
Okay, questions? Ms. Irwin?
Well, actually, I would like to suggest an addition under eminent domain. We were very fortunate that Prop 90 didn't pass, but obviously, there is a lot of discontent among the public with what they perceive as the misuse of eminent domain. So, I was suggesting, the way it's stated right now, it says, you know, oppose amendments to eliminate redevelopment agencies' use of eminent domain. And it makes us look like we are not looking at any reform. And I know the League of California Cities is looking at reform, so I'd like to suggest that we write something or add something along the lines of support the League of California Cities and the California Redevelopment Association in their efforts to modify or reform and/or propose legislation, ballot measures to revise redevelopment agencies' use of eminent domain. I don't think we should look like we are not looking at at least some sort of reform of eminent domain. That would be my suggestion. Oh, a second suggestion is that we add the Discovery Center to community service projects.
Is there any objection to those? Okay, can we include those in the report?
Absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Bill De La Pena?
I would also like to add, under community projects or recreation facilities and open space, the funding for a potential teen or youth recreation facility such as a bowling alley as had been discussed during the council goals.
Okay.
Okay.
Any objection to that? Okay. Any other questions? Okay. What's the pleasure of the council? Ms. Irwin, you want to move?
I'll move the... What are we doing? Accepting the... I'll move that we approve the staff recommendation.
Okay. Ms. Irwin moves the staff recommendation discussion on the motion. Ms. Bill De La Pena?
That's the staff recommendations with the additions, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, that is approved. Item 10 is redevelopment agency reports. We have none. Item 11 is committee, commission, board reports. The first item is 11A, the Investment Review Committee, and Councilmember Irwin and Glancy did the interviews on that. Who wants to handle that?
We interviewed for the Investment Review Committee, Dr. Glancy and myself, and we recommend that council support us in the appointment of John Short to fill the unscheduled vacancy.
Okay. Is that the motion? Okay, Ms. Irwin moves to appoint John Short to the Investment Review Committee. Discussion on that? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, that is approved. Want to congratulate Mr. Short and thank him for his service. Item 11B is the Performing Arts Center Board of Governors at-large position, and we have two names that have entered into nomination. Who's going to make this report? Ms. Irwin?
I can start and Ms. Bill De La Pena can finish. We had two very good candidates. One would be a new candidate and one would be a candidate that would be looking at the second term. And we were unable to reach consensus, so we thought we would bring it to the entire council. My suggestion for the position on the Board of Governors is Bob Berry. He is the Finance Officer for the City of Westlake. He has also been the Finance Officer for the City of Thousand Oaks. He was very instrumental in starting the Board of Governors. I think he was involved with the Alliance for the Arts. One of my main concerns is that as we're looking at, looking at talking to an arts consultant, maybe taking away some of the committees, that we have somebody in there that really has a historic perspective on the arts issues in our community. And that was why I was supporting Bob Berry. And Ms. Bill De La Pena will tell you about the other candidate.
Okay. Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you. I was recommending Thomas Horan. He has been a resident of Thousand Oaks for over 20 years and has quite an extensive background in the arts. He has been a, he's also a current patron of the arts. He impressed me tremendously because he had a lot of energy and given that the majority of members on the Board of Governors have a historic perspective, a knowledge of the agency, that getting a fresh perspective and a different perspective might help the Board of Governors in going through some of the potential changes that the city is looking at regarding the arts. Mr. Horan, whom I don't know personally at all, has, his resume is included, was very, very interested, very well-spoken. He is an experienced fundraiser. He has a financial background as well. He is a committed leader in community organizations and overall, a very good person, in my opinion, to be adding to the Board of Governors. I always have the, I come from the perspective where the direction that I would like to add new members to any board or committee or commission in order to give other residents in the City of Thousand Oaks who would like to serve a chance to serve. And so with that, I would like to recommend Thomas Horan to be nominated and appointed to the Board of Governors.
Okay, we have two names that have been placed into nomination. Let's just start. Ms. Irwin, any discussion from council? Go ahead. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I deeply appreciate the reasoning brought forward by both Mrs. Irwin and Mrs. Bill De La Pena. And looking at the credentials on the applications for both, Mr. Horan's credentials are certainly impressive and he does bring a new perspective and what have you. But one of the things, as we go into financial times, always financial times, there is no one, no one that would apply for this that has the financial insight that Mr. Berry does, as a retired director of finance for this city and oversaw the financing of these facilities and has kept current with all of his issues, both on the Finance Committee of the League of California Cities and as Finance Director for the City of Westlake Village. It would be my feeling or my motion that Mr. Berry be the candidate of choice and with a great deal of respect for Mr. Horan's application and I sincerely hope that he continues to stay interested.
Okay. Mr. Gillette moves for the appointment of Bob Berry for the Board of Governors at-large position. Discussion on the motion? Okay, vote, please.
Motion carries 4-1. Councilmember Bill De La Pena dissenting.
Okay, that is approved and we congratulate Mr. Berry and thank him for his service. Item 12 is council issues. We have none. Item 13 is the city manager's report. Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up from requests from the public tonight, two items worth noting. We had an individual who continuously makes comments about the Lake's redevelopment project and the need for financial reports to council. Council, rest assured that staff provides the legally required reports. And again, if this individual would like to meet with our Finance Director, she would be more than happy to sit down with him and answer whatever questions he may have. During the discussion of the smoking issue, we will have a referral, and I've already talked to Doug Tapking and Rick Schrader, and what they will do is provide a complete comprehensive inventory of all of their respective affordable housing units and clarify how the HVAC works, whether they're separate units or they're part of a common system. So that'll help answer that question that came up tonight. By way of announcements for upcoming issues, there are a few things worth pointing out. Tomorrow, which is March 7th, here at City Hall, the Thousand Oaks Leadership Academy, it's an internal management group, will be holding a mock council meeting and it'll allow some of the employees who normally don't come into the council chambers to get a taste for presenting an issue to council and that'll be of interest and we put it in the council packet. They've prepared a full-blown council agenda with staff reports and everything. On March 8th, Thursday, will be the V-COG meeting and that'll be a public meeting in Camrio, starting at 5 o'clock at Camrio City Hall. Friday night on March 9th, the Thousand Oaks Westlake Village Chamber of Commerce will be holding its annual recognition dinner. And for individuals who are interested in that, you can go to the chamber's website and they'll have more information. I believe two council members will be at that. Next week, from March 10th, which is Saturday through Wednesday, March 14th, three council members and city manager and Mina Leva, our legislative analyst, will be attending the National League of Cities Conference in Washington and there'll be quite a bit of lobbying done as well. In particular, the city will be aggressively pursuing funding for the 10123 interchange project. COSCO will have its board meeting next week on March 14th. The next council meeting will be Tuesday, March 20th. Three items worth of interest worth noting. We continue the budget process with a study session at the beginning of the meeting on the fee schedule or user fees for the next two years. And by way of department reports, we will have the Discovery Center here to provide a project update and unveiling of the conceptual plan for that project and a separate agenda item requesting council authorization to solicit proposals for a consultant to come in and prepare a business plan for the Discovery Center project. So that's it, by way of city manager update. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14 is closed session. We have no closed session items tonight and that brings us to adjournment. And we have three items for adjournment tonight and I'd like to turn it over to the first one to Councilmember Bill De La Pena.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Richard Greenwood Miller passed away. He was the father of former planning commission chair Janet Wall. He died January 30th. He was 87 years old and lived in Phoenix, Oregon. During his lifetime, Richard was, and during World War II, Richard was a weatherman in England and following that, he worked several decades for PPG Industries in Pittsburgh. Richard had over a dozen patents pending in the United States Patent Office and he invented the first process that allowed for one-way mirrored windows. On behalf of the city council, we would like to extend our sincere condolences to all the families mentioned here this evening. And I think that I need to turn it back to Mayor Fox.
Thanks, Ms. Bill De La Pena. We also have two other adjournments. Two city employees lost their father recently. First, John Haregrove. John was the father of city engineering technician Kathy Beamer. John passed away at the age of 95 locally here in Camrio. John was originally from Chicago. He worked in corporate purchasing and was a Camrio resident for eight years. Also, we're adjourning tonight in memory of John Francis Dodwell. John was the father of city resource division manager Joanne Kelly. He passed away on February 13th, 2007. John was 80 years old. He was a graduate of Rutgers University and worked 24 years as the Director of Sales and Planning for Oka Company. And so the city council will adjourn in memory. Our thoughts and prayers are with all three families. And we'll be adjourning to our regular meeting on March 20th, 2007. Want to wish everybody a good night and have a good week. We're adjourned.